I'd like to call the March regular meeting of the Nashville Town Council to order. And someone much smarter and brighter than I am said that we're supposed to pray before we do the pledge, so may we pray, please. Father, we invite you into our tonight to lead us and guide us. Help us to make the right decisions so that our town will prosper in every area. Amen. Can we stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, we will approve our minutes. First of all, January the 27th, 2020, call meeting minutes. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
One correction.
Okay.
And that is on page two. Second paragraph about unrestricted funds should be restricted, should be unrestricted. And I pointed it out to Louise, so she's aware.
Okay.
And that's important because it's been unrestricted for about four budget years, and it's just been corrected. Right, Sam?
Thank you so much, Ms. Hutton. Are there any corrections to the January 29th, 2020 agenda meeting minutes? How about February the 4th, 2020, the regular meeting minutes? If not on those, how about February the 5th, 2020, the call meeting minutes? Any corrections to those minutes? If not, do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Do we have any public comments? Okay, Ms. Scarlett Bennett and Jay Howell. And just state your name and where you live.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Town officials and members of the audience. My name is Jay Howell, and Scarlett Bennett joins me tonight in making a presentation to the Town of Nashville Fire Department. We provide through Code Three Insurance Services, our office located at the New Team in Rocky Mountain on Sunset Avenue. We provide the insurance to the town's fire department, and we also provide some additional firefighter benefits to the members. And at this time, we're representing VFIS, the insurance carrier that provides the insurance on the town's equipment and fire trucks and department members. We take pleasure in telling you, the town officials, that our risk control staff made a risk management survey in February, and Chief Chris Joyner, come on up, Chief. His chief of staff officers and firefighters measured up to a high standard by the VFIS survey. VFIS is a national insurer operating in 48 states. In the United States, we have a measuring stick that is used to determine how safe our insureds are doing their work and how they perform and measured against the others. Nashville's fire service members are in the top 10% by our standards in safety, risk control, loss reduction, and has a high standard for continuing that work. So rarely do we get a chance to present an appreciation certificate and acknowledgement to the fire department because there aren't many of that standard. We insure 90% of the fire departments in North Carolina, including municipalities. And of those 1,250 departments and the 90%, we insure, we measure Nashville's according to what's in the state and nation. And it is truly a high standard and a high honor that we get to make this presentation to Chief. And thanks to him, the town, for letting us serve you with your insurance needs on the emergency services out of our office in Rocky Mountain. So at this time, Scarlett's going to make the presentation to Chief.
Yes, I just want to say thank you also. And I've been doing this 15-plus years. This is the first time we've ever given one of these away since I've been doing that. So that just really speaks volumes. And we just want to thank you, Chief, because of your leadership and also the members there. We're just so proud of you and so proud to be a part of it. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Thank you, Scarlett. And you also.
Yes.
Chris, thanks for keeping us safe. First of all, does that also keep our premiums low?
Yes.
Yes, it does have a bearing.
Pardon?
It does have a bearing.
That's right.
And thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so kindly for coming. We appreciate it.
Job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move on to our items of recognition, and I'd like to call the following people to come forward. Sam Sanchez, Ronnie Denton, and Walter Manning. We always love to recognize people for their achievement, and these three have accomplished an achievement, and we're very proud of them. Sam, she was certified with the North Carolina Local Government Finance Officers Certification. Ronnie Denton, he completed the wastewater collections one certification. Way to go, Ronnie. And Walter Manning, also the wastewater collections first certificate also. So we're proud of you too, Walter. So congratulations. Thank you so very much. You make us proud. Now let's move on to our next item, which is 5B. And this is downtown Nashville Strong Advisory Board member application. Ms. Amy Beasley of Southern Bank, which is located in the Municipal Service District, has submitted an application for appointment to the Downtown Nashville Strong Advisory Board. Her appointment will expire on June 30th, 2022. So the staff recommends the appointment of Amy Beasley to the Downtown Nashville Strong Advisory Board. Do I hear a motion that we appoint Amy to that position? Do I hear second? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign. We'll move right along to our next item. This is the consideration of support for the North Carolina Department of Transportation's INFRA grant for future 187, I-87. Do you want to do that? Okay, I can, okay. The North Carolina Department of Transportation is applying for an infrastructure of rebuilding America, the INFRA grant, for its future I-87 project. A roadway improvement project that will increase resiliency, capacity, and mobility for trucks and cars, as well as installing a fiber network along future I-87 and US 64 that will provide short-term and long-term benefits for the town, cities, and communities along the route. The North Carolina Department of Transportation is requesting a letter of support from the Town of Nashville for the INFRA grant application and has provided the attached support letter for our use, and I'm sure you've read that letter. So do I have a motion that we approve submission of the Town of Nashville's to support this letter by the North Carolina Department of Transportation for the INFRA grant application?
So may.
Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. The next item is consideration to grant the North Carolina Department of Transportation a temporary construction easement along Old Carriage Road.
You bet, you bet. So Old Carriage Road is outside of town limits, but we have a piece of property there, the Town of Nashville does. That's where our vault for metering the sewerage that goes to Rocky Mountain is. And what the DOT is going to be doing is installing roundabouts at Regis Road and at the two interchanges with Old Carriage Road along 64. The north one along Regis Road, there's going to be some construction, some rebuilding of the approaches to the bridge over Stony Creek, right alongside of our property. And they're seeking a temporary construction easement from the town to allow their contractor to be on our property to make some of those widening improvements for that bridge. So what we have before us is a couple documents that were prepared by a consultant that the DOT uses to go out ahead of and before projects like this do land acquisition and obtain easements. And they were in the packet. Kate had pointed out a few things that needed some changing, so I have those here. If you wouldn't mind passing those down, and we'll go through those quickly. So on the first document, which is signed by the mayor. Lou, do you have yours?
I have mine.
Oh, sorry. The original document that was in the packet, if you look, I highlighted the changes. It said, "Transfer of ownership of privately-owned real estate property." Well, we're not transferring ownership, we're simply granting an easement. So the consultant changed the language in that to say, "Willingness to voluntarily convey temporary construction easement." And then later on in that same paragraph, there was also another reference to property as right-of-way. On the revised one, it does refer once again that, you know, the town is waiving its right to have compensation in exchange for the temporary construction easement, and that that will be the town's full settlement for granting this temporary construction easement. I guess I recommend to the Town Council on the fact that this property's not going to be permanently encumbered with anything when they get finished. There really is no need, in my opinion, to seek compensation for this. It's more of a courtesy. Continuing on, then, the second document there is the temporary easement itself, and there was some language that needed to be cleaned up. In the paragraph on the first page, there's the phrase, "The beyond," was in there twice, and it reads much better if you take one of those out. So what it says, "And any additional construction areas beyond the right-of-way and beyond any permanent easements will be terminated upon completion of the project." So that means, once this project is complete, this temporary easement will go away. There's also language right above that that talks about, "It is understood and agreed that the department shall have the right to construct and maintain the cut and/or fill slopes in the above described areas until such time as the property owner alters the adjacent lands in such a manner that the lateral support of the cut or fill slopes are no longer needed." I had asked the consultant if that was language that could be removed. He said that that language had to remain in there because of the circumstances in which we're dealing with. They may be adding additional, you know, they widen the bridge approach, so now the shoulder moves out and the side slope gets pushed a little closer to our property. And what that says is they're going to be responsible for maintaining that until such time as the town would do something different. And to give you an example, something different, say, you know, that big concrete box that meters the sewer, if we were to add three feet of height to that, so future floods wouldn't pour into that, which is a very realistic thing we might do in the future, we would alter or change that side slope. And then what the easement says is, "We are therefore responsible for it after that point."
Randy, I just have one question still regarding this paragraph. So it says, "Any additional construction areas lying beyond the right-of-way limits and beyond any permanent easement areas will terminate upon completion of this project." It still doesn't say that the easement, this temporary easement, will terminate. It just says, "Any additional construction areas." So that makes it sound like any additional construction will terminate.
Sure. They wouldn't be on the property beyond where they have permanent right-of-way or permanent easement if it weren't for the temporary construction easement? So once they do construction, that's beyond where the right-of-way may be or a permanent easement, which they don't have in this case, it's referring, I guess it's inferring back by reference or inference to the temporary easement. They wouldn't be on the property doing anything if they didn't have this temporary construction easement. So that lies beyond the right-of-way. So once that work is done in that temporary construction easement, it goes away. That's the way I understand that when I read it.
This is a construction or engineering map. Do we have a map that pinpoint exactly where this is, that we could reference? It would make sense to us.
Sure. I don't know if you had an opportunity to drive out there, but there were wooden laths with pink flags that kind of represented the area. We don't have any better drawing of this, Louise. You know, the DOT let this project on a design-build to a contractor from this area, Barnhill, and it's up to Barnhill to finish the design-engineering on this. So I don't have any better document than this one to give you as to where this lies in the field. And I don't know if those stakes are still out there in the field. They were a couple weeks ago when I met Tracy Clark, the consultant, seeking this easement out there. They were there then. Ronnie, I don't know, have you been out there lately? Are those laths with the pink ribbons on them yet?
They were a week ago.
So the final thing, you know, the easement doesn't say anything about a lot of temporary construction easements or even permanent ones, say, you know, whoever you allow to use your property, when they're finished, they're going to put it back the way it was? This easement doesn't say that in it. But I was able to get from the contractor or the consultant, standard language they have, the DOT has in all of its construction contracts, which makes it the responsibility of the contractor who gets the contract to do the work that they have to put the property back the way it was when they're finished. And those latter three pages there have three sections that all deal with making sure if they damage anything, they have to fix it, you know, again, which is a possibility. They're going to be out there with large excavating equipment. If they swing wrong and knock the concrete box, they could damage it, break it, crack it, push the fence over. They'll have to fix that at their expense to our satisfaction. And the same goes in with, you know, anything that they put upon the property that might leave tracks or a pile of dirt or gravel or something, they have to remove that and put it back the way it was. So it's not necessarily in the easement document itself, but it's in the contract documents that the DOT will have with whoever gets awarded to construct this project.
So we need to approve the resolution, the letter?
The granting of the temporary construction easement.
Do I hear a motion that we approve, that we approve the grant of the easement on the town's property along Old Carriage Road?
Second.
Do I hear any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All those opposed, like sign. Our next item is, "On January the 7th, 2020, the Town of Nashville approved an inter-local agreement with Nash County for the delivery of Phil athletic programs at Glover Park. As part of that agreement, the town shall transfer ownership of certain athletic equipment and Phil preparation equipment to Nash County. Pursuant to North Carolina Genewit Stachert 160A-274, the attached resolution formally conveys this equipment to Nash County as per the terms of our agreement." And I'm sure you read that. Do you have any discussion or questions about that?
Just as a point of reference, do we have a monetary value on all this equipment that we're turning over to them?
Good question. I don't know.
Marguerite, would you care to answer that?
We did not assign monetary value to it, no, sir.
But the de toro moor, the 2012 and 2016, neither of those were items of great value. I mean, we did...
No, we did assign a value to... Did we do an estimate? I don't remember. We did an estimate of it just from trying to search to see what other things are being sold for.
An estimate of all?
Of the mowers.
Of just the mowers?
Just the mowers, just the large items. So the mowers and the gator, but not...
But there's no estimate on this equipment?
No, no, sir.
All right.
Marguerite, would there be any way we could get an estimate if someone wanted it? I mean, I don't know. I'm asking you because you know about it.
It would be an estimate because it's all used equipment, and some of it is quite old. So, quite old. So, yes.
I mean, the only reason I ask that is I didn't realize just much of it. It's just so much of it we're turning over. Just thought. If you don't have it, you don't have it.
The two mowers, the gator, 140 helmets, 111 shoulder pads, 264 football uniform pants, 100 pants and pad sets, 279 cheerleading uniforms, 54 cheerleading palms, black cherry bags, 18 of those, 13 tackle dummies, 11 hand shields, 11 down markers, one chain set, two end zone pylons, 117 football jerseys, 59 soccer balls, 16 soccer corner poles, 15 soccer corner flags, 26 soccer pennies, 92 cones, 16 soccer ball bags.
A lot of the soccer stuff and things for baseball had been donated through LBJ Chevrolet's youth Chevy sports programs, too. So they were donated to us.
So we had eight baseball bases, one pitching mound, two pitching machines, 14 basketball or baseball softball equipment bags, 420 baseballs, 112-inch softballs, 126 11-inch softballs.
Some of those baseballs and softballs are no longer usable because they've been stored for so long.
Nine helmets, 16 catcher mitts, 16 sets of shin guards, four baseball pitcher equipment, 12 softball catchers' equipments.
That's a lot of stuff, old and new. It's a lot of stuff.
It is a lot.
Wonder parking wreck needed storage space.
They ain't lying. That's a lot of stuff.
It is a lot of stuff.
That statement that says conveyed for no consideration, meaning...
We just gave it to them.
Yeah.
To benefit Glover Park, where our Nashville residents are going to be playing sports. So if you want to look at it that way.
No monetary compensation. Obviously, the consideration is the programs keep rolling here in the Town of Nashville.
And they combine with the equipment that they have, too. So they'll be moving equipment into Glover Park to help deliver programs, too.
So what we need to do is approve this resolution that we give this equipment to the county. Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Second. This discussion? Let me then take a vote. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. So now we're going to move on to our next item, which is authorizing the Town manager to discard surplus. And would you like for me to read that, or would you like to just tell them about the surplus?
Well, we had some surplus items we put on Gov. Deals that didn't sell. So now we're left with getting permission from the Town Council to get rid of that.
It has no value, didn't it say in there?
Nobody gave us anything for it. Nobody wanted it.
The market has spoken.
The market has spoken, and nobody wanted it.
So we have 400 concrete block cylinders, eight by eight by 16. We had that sewer lateral camera, which, you know, got stuck in the line and got pulled on and the fiber line ended snapped. 17 door-tail desk telephones. And I'm surprised some of them didn't make it out in the parking lot and just get run over, frustrating as they were to use before we got rid of them. Four computer monitors and eight keyboards, computer keyboards.
Do I hear a motion that we give him permission to do whatever you want?
I'm trying to figure out how we accumulated 400 cinder blocks.
Ronnie or Lee, do you have...
The best understanding, they were here when I got here, and what it was was a J.W. It might have been a fork out there, or it might have been an environmental fork. I don't know. It was supposed to be a concession stand, and they didn't do it. I mean, it was all a box, the doors, the cinder blocks, the steelwork. It's all been there.
So it's a disassembled concession stand?
It was supposed to be a concession stand. It was supposed to be at one of the forks. I don't know which one. I'm thinking probably it was by another fork. I've been here, I've been here seven years, so it's been before.
Do I hear a motion then that we allow Randy to dispose of these items?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, like sign. All right, let's move on to our next item, which is 5G. The council has been presented with recommendations from the Department on the Future Direction of the PRCR Department, now that the town is partnering with Nash County to offer Team Phil Athletics at Glover Park. The PRCR Advisory Board met on Monday, March 2nd, to be presented with recommendations from staff for the revised Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Department, and budget requests for the fiscal year 2020-21. The recommendations from the PRCR Advisory Board will be presented to us tonight. And so, Marguerite.
So I apologize that nobody from the PRCR Advisory Board could be here tonight. They are working poles and revival and some other things that have taken them away since they met last night. But I'm going to read their recommendation to them, and one of the, to y'all, and one of them has submitted a letter that he would like to also be read in a minute. So after being presented with information about proposed programs, available spaces for lease, staff responsibilities, and a proposed departmental budget, and much discussion, the PRCR Advisory Board, comprised of George Jeffries from Wynwood, Mary Richardson from Regency, Melissa Lump from Fort Street, and Jason Edwards from Woodfield, recommend that Nashville Town Council move forward with slated programs scheduled presented by the department, hire a full-time recreation supervisor, rent 107 West Nashville Drive for programming and office space, and move forward with the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget. Moving forward with the recommendations will allow the department to enhance the quality of life for all residents and provide for future growth. So that is their recommendation. Now I'm going to read a letter from Jason Edwards. Madam Mayor and members of council, thank you for allowing this letter to be read in my absence from this evening's meeting. I wanted to formally support the recommendations made by the PRCR Advisory Board. As a member of this board, a town resident, and a parent, I'm excited at the possibilities and potential changes, and potential these changes could have. Finally, I ask that each of you support this recommendation and become more engaged with opportunities that will become available. Thank you. Jason W. Edwards, 222 Woodfield Drive.
Do you have any questions or any discussion?
We had put attached to that a copy of the proposed budget once again. I think this is the same one you've seen the other night, the other evening.
This one also had the rental... This one also had the rental was decreased and the van was struck from it. So it's a more true number from what we discussed the other night. But it's a $3,000 rental a month figure.
Versus?
Versus the $4,000 that we had, that I had in there from the other night when we met for that called meeting.
And the $12,000 for the passenger van is out?
Yes, it's gone.
So this is just the presentation of your requested budget?
Yes, this is just, yeah.
So it, of course, would be considered?
Yes, 100%. Yes, this is, yes, just so y'all have...
But I do see now that when we're looking at the total with the previously listed in non-departmental and capital reserve removed, we're looking at a 21% savings.
Yes.
Between which numbers, Kate?
The total with the blue highlights removed and the capital reserved removed. So when we take out all of the ones that we're now having, Sam is now putting into the budget that weren't previously in the budget and taking out the capital reserve.
You're looking at approximately 21% savings between what was requested last year, or budgeted for last year, fiscal year 2019, 2020, and what is requested for this year.
So that would be the $289,768?
Yes, as compared to the $228,922.
So $66,847 difference.
I'm going to trust your math on that.
And just doing percentages, when we actually look at where the savings could come from, which is what we spent in athletics, the 142,000, we're looking at a 42% savings. And that's the only place where we could find savings, just by having the existence of a department.
Okay, thank you so very much. We'll take this into consideration. Our last item on our agenda for tonight is a building lease for 107 West Nashville Drive for the PRCR Department that was mentioned.
Sure. Well, the last time the council met and talked about this, there was a desire to see if we could get the building for less. So I reached out to the real estate broker who's managing this for the owner and he put the question to the owner. The owner came back and said, for a one-year lease, he was not willing to take any less than $3,000 a month. But if we wanted to entertain a multiple-year lease, he would. And he came back with, if we lease it for three years, it would be $2,500 the first year, $2,600 the second year, $2,700 a month the third year. And then it would have an option to be renewed for two additional years at $2,800 a month for the fourth and $2,900 for the fifth. I don't think he's inclined to offer anything better.
So is that just our information?
I, well, you know, in order to make a decision on whether to lease the building or not, those are the numbers. You know, and I know the agreement we have with Nash County is to do a looksee on this partnering for the athletic programs at Glover Park for one year. This, what he is willing to offer us at a discount is a multiple year, which the timeframes don't match up.
But thank you so much for looking at it. We appreciate it and we'll look at this. Do we need to vote on this?
Don't you, you're requesting a go-ahead, aren't you?
Well, I guess the way I look at it, assuming things will go successful with Nash County, and I truly believe they will, a year from now, even with a one-year lease, we would be kind of in the same boat. You know, we rent this building for three grand a month and we get to the end of our year, you will know at that time if we're going to continue on with Nash County. If that is the case, then we would be looking for space all over again. And I don't see a whole lot of anything opening up between now and then. Marguerite did chase down another lead on a building today. On Washington, East Washington Street, it's not going to be available till that tenant gets their new building built, which could be over a year. Haven't heard anything on anything else, but I guess the, I would ask the question, would you be interested in voting on a multiple year lease? If not, are you willing to pay $3,000 a month for that building?
I think there is a nice savings of a few months on the multiple year, but I just don't see us entering into a multiple-year lease because we do want to see how everything goes. And while I do think that the programs will be successful, I would rather just have the benefit of having that short-term one-year lease. In the beginning, I thought we didn't want to go as high as the 3,000. However, if we can fit it into the budget and still have a 21% savings, I think that that would be our best bet with the least amount of risk.
But they're not willing to go with a one-year lease?
Well, they are, but it'll be $3,000 a month.
Right, which is in that presented budget that we just got.
I really would like to see the town start moving towards something on a permanent basis rather than renting or leasing anything. And I realize that makes, makes it a tough choice because finding the space to do something. Just out of curiosity, because I did bring some things that we had from your presentation, the current programs that we're doing, Marguerite, the karate, adult partner dance, adult open gym, adult recreations, where are those currently being done?
Karate is being held in here every Thursday night except for the second Thursday night of the month. Adult Partner Dance is being held at the Nashville Community Building on Wednesday nights. And that is the only night, they might have Tuesday nights open, some, spotty. And then, what was the other, Open Gym, and that is being held at Nashville Elementary School Gym that we share with the county. So we, and we are, so we have Tuesdays and Thursday nights and the county uses it every other night of the week. So unless we get bumped for a school event.
So we need to build, we need to build additional building for what? You've got it there for what, what things that you don't have already?
These are current programs since she's saying where they were.
Okay, all these current?
It would be for the proposed lineup of things.
Yeah, the proposed stuff.
And Marguerite, maybe you could recite those quick.
I've got them.
Yeah, they're on.
Okay.
So I agree with Lynn. I think we do need to be looking at something permanent, but permanent is not going to happen, I think, for another at least year or two. I think we need something in the temporary.
I know this came up before about the amount of space that you needed. And we looked at several options when we were considering it. Is there any way that we could work around for the year something that was on a smaller scale?
If we're working on a smaller scale, then you're going to be limiting any type of programming that involves a lot of movement, just because it's a safety issue. So...
One other building that we were considering that is substantially smaller.
Oh, the one on Washington?
What could be run out of there, if anything?
You could probably do some game nights, maybe. Parking's going to be an issue though and people trying to get across the street to that location.
But we really couldn't run anything other than a couple of game nights anyway.
Game nights, you're not going to be able to have the ability to move a movie night indoors. There's not enough space to be able to do many things that require a lot of people.
Maybe we need to go slow this first year.
Well, without any, without any space, you know, what we're doing right now, that was just read, we can continue to do. Some of the things that you partner with, like the library for Santa Claus, Storytime, those things you can continue to do. Maybe some of our summer camps down at Stony Creek Park. Although it makes me nervous to have you down there with a bunch of kids and not have any permanent shelter down there. If a storm blows up, you have to run to the LNL or to Sheetz and it's not a good situation to be in.
I just, I think $3,000 a month is a lot.
It is a lot, even for one year.
I agree.
It is. But if she's found the 20% that we've asked for, including that number, it's one year. That's, I mean, we're having a real hard time finding anything that's allowing us to do the one year.
Well, there's one other thing that we might be able to consider, but we need to be able to evaluate that.
We can push this decision off.
Yeah, I think if we could at least hear one other option that might be out there before we make the final decision on this, I would feel a little better.
So do I hear a motion concerning the building lease for 107 West Washington Drive for the PRCR Department?
When do you, when do you need to respond to him?
I told him I would get back soon. Obviously, it hasn't rented in...
In, in...
Months. I don't think, I don't think we're in jeopardy of somebody swiping it out from underneath of us, but...
We know, we know that you have to start programming, but it wouldn't be the end of the world if we...
Didn't do some of the things.
If it just was put off a couple of weeks.
The only thing you're risking at this point in time probably is summer camps.
Okay.
So those might be coming off the table.
Okay.
Yeah, if the parents make arrangements for other summer camps before we announce ours, then we wouldn't have as many.
Yeah.
Can we, can we table this?
If I hear a motion, we can.
I move that we table it until we do a little bit more investigating.
All those in, is there any discussion?
Need a second.
Louise, second. All those in favor of table in this issue, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Like sign. Okay, we will table this until further discussion. And I feel like we, we have it in our hearts and we're just going to work on it and come up with the right solution for everybody. Do you have a report tonight, Mr. Manager?
Just a few things. The library roof has been rehabbed. The used car sale streamers have been taken off the roof and it's got a nice briny shite look, white shiny look to it if you look at it from CVS. So that project is done later this week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We will, Sam and I will be meeting with the department heads to go over the individual budgets and start compiling that and putting that all together. So looking forward to that. A lot of good ideas came from the staff on, on measures that we can put into place to, you know, hold things down as far as cost. I think we got our initial numbers back on value from Nash County. Now, they're preliminary, but it's somewhat disappointing. It's only from last year to this year, as far as growth, a .19% increase over the previous year. I think, Sam, you said for the four years running, we're about 1.4% annual increase in taxable value. So as you know, a good chunk, a good share of our budget comes from the general fund, which is property taxes. And when we don't have a whole lot of increased value, there's not much increase in there. And what we're fighting with more than anything is inflation. You know, everything goes up almost 3% per year and when our increase in, what we can collect taxes on only goes up a little bit, it's tough to make it all mesh together.
You said the increase was 1.19?
It was 0.19.
Usually we get an estimate around that same time and it's usually very low.
The actual. Yeah. But it's better than a wild guess.
Yeah.
So, anyway, you probably had heard from the fire, or the police chief, that the police department's online with Zerker now, the software. A few kinks and bugs to work out on that. Police department was, or the fire department was to receive some benefit from that and they will. It just hasn't been connected yet. And we got the second carport put up for the ladder truck, which we are purchasing from the Cary Fire Department. And we were supposed to have it this week, but I think they're going to hang on to it for a bit. The chief had mentioned Cary's having inspections done on their other ladder trucks and they may need to hang on to it for a bit if one of those inspections doesn't go well. So it's about all I have to bring you up to speed on.
And the carport? I mean, the port?
It's there.
It's there.
Yeah, yep.
Just waiting for the truck.
I, I, I misunderstood what we were looking at. Initially it said we were going to get an enclosed carport. I consider enclosed meaning...
With the rear end?
With the rear end and the front. But I guess what you meant by enclosed was just sides all the way down to the ground, but that's what we got.
I was thinking it would have a back end too.
But the back end is out.
But still...
And the front end is out.
That doesn't resolve our squirrel problem.
No, that's right. It doesn't resolve our squirrel problem.
No.
You know.
But, but the enclosed sides do keep it from getting wet and the dirt sticking on it, which is...
That's true, but the rodents can still get to it.
Right.
But I just misunderstood. I, I, I interpreted enclosed meaning...
Yes.
Enclosed, front door, back door. But it's not.
And we did get a lead on some property right on Eastern Avenue for a second fire station. And the mayor and I and the chief met with that property owner last week and that looks very promising.
Well, that sounds good.
Yeah.
What was the cost of the enclosure? Was it 94, as you predicted?
I think it was $9,800.
We got that from the fund that the county has?
Yes.
That they keep? Okay. That's good.
Are there any comments from the, comments from council?
I would like to say something, Mayor. I don't want the public or especially Marguerite to believe that I have changed my position on this. I am still very much supportive of the recreation programs. And I am willing to entertain the one-year lease if we can work something out somewhere where we might be able to find something at a little better price. I'm also hopeful that there might be another opportunity for us that we can investigate very quickly and see if that possibly pans out. But I just feel like we need to at least step back from it tonight and see how that might look. I definitely, as far as the future is concerned, I want us to be thinking, when you mentioned the property that we were considering potentially for the fire station and it was a fairly substantial piece of property, I thought, my, one of my thoughts then was perhaps that might be a place that we could have an add-on, adjunct portion to build a community center that would be a facility that could be used for town purposes, not only recreation, but also other purposes. So we're definitely in a mode where we need to be in a forward-thinking position and I'm trying to do that and trying to weigh everything out as best I can individually to make good, sound decisions for the town. So I haven't given up on it yet. We're just trying to work through to make a decision.
Any other comment?
I just wanted to add a quick congratulations to Chief Joyner and the entire fire department just for what we heard and what they've done in keeping us safe and doing it at the highest standard of the state. And also congratulations to Sam, Ronnie and Walter on your achievements. Very well done. And that's all I have to add today.
Louise, do you have anything?
I'll echo both, both what Kate has said and what Lynn, what Lynn has said. I do understand that we, we need to find a place for Marguerite to consent, to continue the carpentry wrecked part of the house. My only concern is right now, I, we're talking with the general public, the general public talking with me, I don't know if 20, a 21% reduction in last year's budget would be enough, would, how it would be accepted by the general public. But, but saying that, I'm not, I'm not saying that I don't want you to have anything. I know we, we're going to find something. We just got to be very cautious as to what we do because once we write this budget up with a 20% reduction, they're not going to come talk to Marguerite. They're going to come talk to us. So I think we need to move, if we have to move slow, like we thought, like we said we were going to do to start with, and may not pursue some of the things until another year, then that may be the route we have to take. But I'm, like I said, I'm in support of, trying to make sure she's got a place to go and I know she does. Every time I go to the town hall, I walk into, walk by the hall and look in the office right there where... Tessa, I had to get my Tessa's and my Tressa's right. Where Tessa used to be, I look in there and I see she's, I mean, if she calls, everything's going to probably come off the shelf. She doesn't, doesn't have any room in there. So I do realize she, she needs a space. Don't lose hope, lose hope. We're still, we're still searching and we'll come up with something. And to the employees that are here and to the citizens that are here, I hope everybody has already gone out and voted because the polls have closed. Don't care who you voted for, as long as you did exercise your right to vote, because your vote does count. your vote does count.
Amen. Anybody else?
I would just say, the greater picture that we're looking at right now, we have a lot of unknowns that are going on in this world. And one is the financial picture. We don't know how this coronavirus is going to affect us. This is just the beginning. And whereas we don't want to live in fear, we do have to be vigilant and very cautious. And that means particularly about finances. So that is the bigger picture.
We need to stay prepared because we don't know what's going to happen.
Stay prepared, keep your powder dry.
Thank you, and I would just like to thank each of you for coming out tonight. It's always nice to see friendly faces and I would also like to ditto, Marguerite, we appreciate what you do and, and we're going to have a good program. And again, congratulations to those of you that worked hard to, to get those, make those achievement improving yourselves and your education. We do thank you for that and we're also very proud of the fire department. So thank you again for coming out. At this time, I'd like for us to go into closed session pursuant, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5 Real Estate. Do I hear a motion that we go into closed session?
So moved.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.